Okay, I think we can start this.
Yes, we're ready to begin, Insha Allah. بسم الله الرحمن الرحيم Allahu Akbar, wa sallim wa barakatuh ala sa'idina Muhammadin wa ala alihi wa sahbihi ajma'in. Welcome everyone and thank you for coming tonight here for one of these side sessions for the KORS conference. KORS is the conference of conversations on religion, ethics and science. And we try to take a humble intellectual approach and relational a relational approach through multiple disciplines to talk about matters surrounding religion, ethics and science and the reconciliation between them. We bring a lot of scholars, students, lifelong learners from a variety of academic bliss disciplines and religions and secular communities as much as we can, so that we can achieve a better understanding through dialogue that is not only informed through academic inquiry, but is also through respectful and productive dialogue as well. And with us today, we have one of the professors that was graciously invited last year and who we benefited from when he spoke about, you know, the role of Islam and the science or the kind of reconciliation between them from his personal view. We have Dr. Nidal Gassoum, who's an astrophysicist. He's currently as a serving as a professor of physics and astronomy at the American University of Sharjah in the United Arab Emirates. He received his masters in science and his PhD degrees from the University of California in San Diego, and he spent extended periods of time as a researcher for NASA. And Alhamdulillah, praise be to God, as a faithful Muslim, he has published multiple articles and even some books talking about Islam and science and where they meet and where they may, where some questions may need to be asked. His latest one being Islam's Quantum Question: Reconciling Muslim Tradition and Modern Science. He has lectured at many renowned universities, including Cambridge, Oxford, Cornell and Madison in Wisconsin, and has been featured in a number of international media outlets, including Al Jazeera, BBC and the NPR. And he's now with us here on a virtual platform through ASU and through the KORS Conversations on Religion, Ethics and Science. And we have a few students here, another professor from ASU and myself, Insha Allah, where we all like to hear from him for a few moments to talk about Islam, science, where we find ourselves and maybe open up the floor in about 10 to 15 minutes to some of the students so that they can maybe ask questions or share some of their experiences as well. Dr. Nidal, please.
بسم الله الرحمن الرحيم الحمد لله و السلام و سلام على رسول الله Salaam alaikum everyone. Good evening for those of you who are in Arizona and good day for anybody joining from anywhere else. I don't assume anybody is joining from my part of the world where it is 7 AM, but good morning to anyone from this part of the world. I am delighted to be part of this conversation, this conference course and this session in particular. I am particularly indebted to Imam Omar, Dr. Fahim and Pastor Ben Sanders for the invitation and for organizing all of this. I think this is a very important topic for our days, for our times because science has become a central activity for humanity. Science now affects everything that we do in life, every, everything that we do individually and collectively. The economy, our lives, our thoughts even, our behavior, our interaction, in fact, even our spirituality. I once wrote an article about how technology has changed even the way people pray and how people even practice their faiths. Nowadays, people go through even Hajj or Umrah, you know, holding their smartphone and using various apps to their prayers. I still remember many years ago when the first time I was sitting in a Friday prayer and a fellow next to me in the middle of the sermon opened his smartphone and was reading, I don't know what messages. And I was just absolutely shocked that in the middle of the prayer he was reading, I don't know if it was WhatsApp messages or something. And then he closed it and then five minutes later he opened it again and he was, and for him it was like absolutely normal that he was doing this sort of parallel processing or multitasking that he was participating in a collective prayer, but at the same time he was, he was participating in some kind of exchange of messages. And not just exchanging messages or using apps, but our sense of self and our self, the sense of time and sense of activity individually with God and with, with the community has been completely affected by science and, and technology. Science in Islam has had, of course, a long history. Most people associate the word science with the word علم in Arabic or Islamic vocabulary. The word علم actually refers to knowledge, which is more general and actually deeper than science. But unfortunately, in the Arabic language, the word science, when it became science in the modern sense, which I'll explain in a minute, did not have a special term for it, although I think it should so that we can really understand what this science that we are dealing with today really means. علم is the concept by which knowledge is not just what you know, but it is what you do with it and how you practice it, how you conceive of it. In particular, knowledge has a religious connotation because in the Quran we find many, many verses that refer to knowledge. In fact, one of the scholars said the word علم and its derivatives is mentioned over 780 times in the Quran. علم يعلمون علماء etc. But most importantly, it is, it has this religious connotation because in one of the famous verses يرفع الله الذين آمنوا منكم والذين أوتوا العلم درجات. Allah raises those of you who believe or have believed and those of you who have been given this علم or knowledge or some part of علم, knowledge by degrees, درجات. So the more knowledge you have, the higher a position you have in the eyes of God. There is also another dimension to this علم, knowledge in Islam, which is would tend to be ignored or forgotten or dissociated from the concept of science today in modern parlance. And that is the ethical dimension. In Islam, it is not enough that you know. It is very important what you do and how you behave with this knowledge because with knowledge comes responsibility. And indeed, there is a verse in which Allah speaks of what you know and how, what you see, what you hear, what you think has responsibility and your responsibility and you will be judged for the acts and the responsibility that you carried with whatever you know and what you know can come from the senses or your mental abilities, your reason. So I wanted to just give sort of a very brief background to this idea of علم, knowledge slash science in the Islamic, not only religion, but culture and civilization. Needless to say, and there is, I don't think any need to go back to this, but the number of Muslim scholars who spent their entire lives doing, pursuing knowledge and pursuing science is in the thousands and this lasted for over a thousand years from early maybe eighth, ninth century AD to at least the 18th, 19th century AD. The other idea I wanted to mention before we get into a discussion of why this is all important is that science then had or witnessed a transformation from the 17th century onward to which I usually refer to as modern science. In fact, Imam Omar referred to in the introduction to my book, Islam's Quantum Question: Reconciling Muslim Tradition and Modern Science, so there's modern science there. But my most recent book, which I really want to refer students and, and anybody interested is actually a much shorter book, much easier and really written for youngsters. In fact, it is titled The Young Muslim's Guide to Modern Science. Again, emphasis on modern science. The reason why both books refer to explicitly modern science is because modern, is because science, as I said, witnessed and went through a revolution, a double revolution in, in the early 17th century onward to 18th, 19th, 20th century. In fact, today we have a whole branch called Philosophy of Science to try to understand how does this science function really? What, what does it say and how does it work? And how do we assess it? How do we know what we know? And is it established? Is it guaranteed? Can we have different forms of knowledge? Can we have different results on, on a given topic? Like we have different ideas in philosophy or different views or different models in sociology, in psychology? Can we have different forms of knowledge in, let's say, physics? Different ideas, different theories, different views? And you go to biology and say there are different ways you can pick and adopt. You are more of a, I don't know, a realist, for example, or an existentialist or what have you in philosophy? And you can have different branches in, let's say, physics or biology. That is the whole field of philosophy of science. Why do we have this? Because science, the reason why I refer to it explicitly and with emphasis as modern science is because science first of all dissociated or separated natural science from other forms of science. As I said, علم in the Islamic culture and civilization is more global, wider and it does not dissociate between all forms of knowledge. In fact, it tends to be holistic and it tends to be, if you look at all the scholars that we had during our thousand year civilization, you will find that almost every one of them was active in different branches. Many of them were philosophers, they were sometimes even religious scholars. You take somebody like Ibn Rushd. Ibn Rushd was, was Qadil Qudhat, was supreme judge, was, was the highest faqih, was a faqih mushtahead. The highest level of fiqh jurisprudence. But at the same time, he was the highest physician, he was physician of the court and he had books on, on, on طيب, on medicine. But at the same time, he was a philosopher, he was an astronomer, he wrote books on various fields. So none of them said, no, 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 wait a minute, if I am like me, an astrophysicist, then I have to do my astrophysics in complete separation from every other branch of knowledge. I cannot bring in, in my papers of astrophysics, you know, my philosophy or my psychology or my religiosity or anything like that. So that's the first thing, natural science is now completely separated. Number two, science became naturalistic, not just natural, dealing with the natural world. It became naturalistic, meaning if I'm going to describe and try to explain any phenomenon in the natural world, I have to limit myself to not, to natural causes, to causes in nature. I cannot bring in any other supernatural factors or agents. So I cannot, for example, refer to angels, I cannot refer to demons, I cannot refer to even spirit, روح or نفسي. I cannot refer to my interaction with God when I'm doing any science. So for example, in the past and still in some parts of the world today, when somebody is afflicted by some mental illness, let's say, very commonly people will refer to gin or will refer to, you know, some religious issue, being punished or misguided or whatever. Whereas in modern science, in modern medicine, one would have to talk only in terms of chemical imbalance, talk about neurology, talk about chemicals and pills and do CT scans and, and see what we see in the brain activity, things like this. So, modern science now excludes completely, leaves out anything that is not within nature, including God himself. So, does this mean that science rejects God and says, God, it does not exist, we cannot talk about God? It is, it is something that is in the past or something that is primitive or old fashioned or whatever, what have you? Again, the answer is no, because science, by definition, as I just said, this modern science limits itself to what is in nature. If God is not part of nature, then God is not part of the modern science. But it does not mean that whatever is outside of this natural world cannot be considered outside of the modern science. So all that modern science says is, you can talk about God, you can practice your religion, you can do whatever you want, but not within the science, outside of the science. So you can do your psychology any way you like, you can do your religious activity any way you like. You can have your community activity any way you like, but that is not part of this modern science that we are talking about. So that's another issue that comes in and that leads to some frictions as to why are you excluding, why are you limiting, why are you working like this? And we can talk a little bit more a little bit later as to, is this acceptable? Is this constructive? Is it good that modern science is doing this, limiting ourselves and excluding other branches? Or is it unacceptable? And there are, as you can imagine, various viewpoints for Muslim scholars and Muslim philosophers from the 20th and 21st century on this. The last thing I want to mention briefly, as I said, this will be just, this was going to be just a brief introduction to the topic so that we can have a base for conversation is the issue of modern technology now. I mentioned earlier that technology has been playing a greater and greater role in our lives. But there are additional ways, not just, you know, now we use apps, now we are completely obsessed with, with technology. We don't even have peace of mind, we don't have, even when we pray, we are completely obsessed with the messages we are receiving on our apps or what have you. Technology has brought in the ability to, in fact, even change the natural world and change even the human person. So now we have technologies that modify the human body. We have technology that modifies the human mind. We have technology that modifies nature itself, whether it is life in nature or inert parts of nature. So now we have changed the climate, now we are changing even some animals. Now we are changing even how processes in the natural world occur in terms of water pollution, pollution of the water and pollution of the air and pollution of our foods. Now we are modifying foods, there is something called genetically modified foods, genetically modified organisms. There is now technology that changes even the way we fight. Now we have biological weapons, we have, we have nuclear weapons, of course. All kinds of technologies that have now changed the way we behave and the way we deal with the natural world around us. Now, the natural world around us and the human body are things that we have been entrusted with in our Islamic conception. They are not just things around, go ahead and modify them, do whatever you like as long as you are happy and you benefit from any such modifications. No, we know again from the Quran and from our Islamic teachings that all of these, including our, our human bodies, are things that we have been entrusted with. They are for us to use properly, but they are not our property. It's not up to me. That's why I cannot just decide to kill myself, for example, I've had enough, okay, I'm gone. I cannot just, you know, remove some piece of me and replace it by something else. I cannot take something from somebody else and just use it any way I like. There are ethical guidelines again and sometimes religious prohibitions, clear, not just ethical principles, but injunctions, religious injunctions as to you will be able to or should be allowed to do the following and not allowed to do the following. And so this technology or different forms of new technologies have now challenged us as to how we behave and how we deal with, with, with these things. It started with just some pills, which originally were, yeah, this is good medicine, it is technology. It modifies the way my body is behaving or some of my organs. Then they became certain devices and some of them we put into our bodies like pacemakers, so now I'm modifying the way my heart behaves. But everybody says, yeah, fine, you are just fixing any problem. Then we started to have devices that fix our problems, like for example, suppose I go into an accident and I lose a limb, I lose a leg and I replace, replace it with a prosthetic leg. So far so good, so I can, great, so now I can walk and I can run. But now these prosthetic legs can give me even more power. I can run even faster than some other people and maybe I can jump even more and these are even just simple examples. Then we started to have some, the ability to, to do something to our brains. So we can take some pills and they modify the way I think, the way I feel. And of course, there are some limits, some of them are good. We have people who are, let's say epileptic or have some other issues and they have to take the pills to make sure that they function properly. But there are other people who take some other pills that modify the way their brain behaves, their mind behaves. And there's a, there's a line there not to be crossed between you're trying to fix your illness and you're trying to extend or improve on your brain. And then now there are chips that can be inserted, that can be inserted into the arms or into the hands that can modify or improve the way our bodies can function. And now we have, I don't think I have seen anybody who have put, maybe there are some chips into, into their heads directly, but definitely animals. The latest one was last year with some, some chimps who were implanted with some, with some chips, chimps with chips and who could then do some activities with their brains without moving their head, their hands or without going to someplace just by with their minds, because now you can have, you can have sort of something that looks like telepathy. Your, your chip now can have sort of wifi connection and can upload and download and, and order some objects to do, to do some things. And very soon this will be, yes, neural link and, and and very soon this will be possible for, for humans, if it is not already possible for humans. And at that point, we are modifying humans. This is called transhumanism or modified, improved human bodies and human minds. So, science and technology have challenged us with new forms of learning, new forms of acquiring knowledge, this naturalistic methodological naturalism, as it is called in Philosophy of Science, and some new knowledge, some new theories, biological evolution, evolutionary psychology. You know, there's all kinds of fields now that have popped up that are really challenging. Plus, all these technological applications that have been brought by this modern science that are challenging us every day as we go. But I want to conclude with this just one last thought, which is we Muslims need to look at the way science and technology function and try to frame them with an Islamic worldview and an Islamic framework. What I don't like is people, you know, sort of zooming in on one idea or one result from science or one theory or whatever and say, how do, what do you mean with this? No, I accept, I won't accept this. I say, if you're accepting science in general and how it is done today and you're teaching it for years and years to the kids and then you come to one result and say, I'm not accepting that. Well, you accepted the whole methodology and you accepted and you built this whole approach and this whole knowledge. And then in the end, you reach to something and say, ah, we cannot accept this, how can this be? So I think it is a challenge and this was done by a number of Muslim thinkers and philosophers maybe forty five, forty or fifty years ago. In the 1970s and 80s, there was this rich debate and discussions among Muslim thinkers around the world, many of them writing in English actually, about how this modern science should be brought into the Islamic fold or enveloped into an Islamic worldview and Islamic ethic. And that's, I think, what we need to do to always consider science within our Islamic perspective instead of, you know, sort of dealing with issues piecemeal. So I think I've spoken more than I intended to, so I'm happy to have a conversation with my brothers here in the panel and with the rest of the participants.
جزاك الله خيرًا May Allah reward you for that. You made some really interesting points and one of the ones that I was initially drawn to was your mentioning of the word علم, that it's not reduced to just science or the sciences, but it's referring to all deep knowledge. And one of the things that I feel like most discussions around science or around religion are missing is that they are missing this interdisciplinary approach, the way our classical scholars had. For instance, when we talk about religion, it's oftentimes siloed from other humanities or other disciplines or other sciences and it's very one dimensional. And then on the opposite side, you have discussions of sciences or philosophies and they tend to be siloed away from each other. Very rarely do we see discussions that are truly interdisciplinary. Unless one has a PhD maybe in one thing and then talks about something with a very elementary education or level of reading in another, and then that leads to a lot of false assumptions as to what is really being, you know, what is really being said in that other field that they're not a specialist in. I wanted to know if, if you've seen that in your field of academia where there is that lack of appreciation of the interdisciplinary, I guess you say, approach that would be necessary, because like you said, Ibn Rushd, Qadil Qudhat, the master judge of all of Andalusia, right, in southern Spain. But he was also the, the court doctor. He was also the philosopher, right? And he comes from a tradition of, a family tradition of scholarships, but you have the same thing with also Ibn Sina, right? The master jurisprudent, but also the master, you know, physician. He wrote the Canon of Medicine, which today remains as one of the foundations of modern medicine as we know it right now. And you still have him being also one of the greatest theologians and philosophers of all time. And then you have countless examples therein. So you never had this divorcing, right, of the disciplines like we do today. How do, how do you navigate that at your level of expertise or your level of accomplishment in academia, particularly in, in the scientific field, in a STEM field? That is pushing boundaries, right? You're, you're saying you were talking about pushing boundaries of the mind and technology, but what about pushing the boundaries of what we're going to be doing possibly off planet? Or what research are we finding off planet that will take us there eventually? I just wanted to know your thoughts on that, Insha Allah.
Yeah, absolutely, 100% agreed. So, there's two issues here. One is, science, not science, sorry, knowledge has diversified so much and has increased so much that maybe in the past it was possible to, you know, combine all of this in, in one brain, although those were really big brains, you know, Ibn Rushd and Ibn Sina and many others, those were really big brains. I mean, one of the things that astounded me most about Ibn Rushd is he wrote books on astronomy for God's sake. I mean, this is a person, this is a person who wrote, you know, Al kulliyat fitib. This is sort of the major, the main, big principles of medicine. And he's known as a philosopher. If you go to Europe or even in the Arab Muslim world and you say Ibn Rushd, they say, oh, the philosopher. Do you know that he wrote Al kulliyat fitib? On medicine, he was writing sort of the major main principles, like, okay, I'm going to teach you the fundamentals, the main things that you start with. In jurisprudence, in fiqh, he wrote بدأة المشتهد ونهاية المقصد. I mean, this is how you go from being, you know, sort of a practitioner, a, let's say, an average Muslim to being a mushtahead. This is somebody who has reached the level of اشتihad in fiqh. And he was, as you said, you know, Qadil Qudhat. Anyway, but in those times, it was maybe possible if you were a genius like Ibn Rushd or Ibn Sina, and those were definitely geniuses. You were able, but not just these two big geniuses. Almost everybody was sort of a Renaissance man. I mean, every one of them had the, had every interest and there was most importantly, I think the key idea is everybody realized that knowledge is interconnected. This is the interdisciplinarity that you were referring to. And so because they realized that knowledge is interconnected, they did not just focus on one branch. Nowadays, people feel like, well, how do you, you want me to be an expert in astrophysics, but at the same time be an expert in philosophy and sociology and, and maybe some biology and maybe some economics and things, it's impossible. So people will say, it's impossible, what are you talking about? I have to specialize in one thing if I'm going to make any progress, if I'm going to be even an expert, even in my astrophysics. Sometimes people want me to give them a talk on some, I'll say that's part. I mean, even just yesterday, the day before, I received, I received an email from here, from the UAE Space Agency asking me if me and my students would be willing to join the next project of the UAE Space Program, which is devoted to launching a mission to an asteroid. And I said, oh, no, 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 asteroids, I know nothing about asteroids. I don't do asteroids. So I'm sorry, yes, I am an astrophysicist, I have 30 years of academic life on my back, but I don't know any asteroids. I mean, I teach astronomy in general. I mean, I teach astronomy in general, I know what asteroids are, but I cannot do research on asteroids, I'm sorry. Uh, but at the same time, I want to say something. You know, the, uh, American higher education system, the American mo- mode or model of higher education is very different from the European one, which unfortunately was adopted in many places in the Arab Muslim world for, after colonialism. Uh, I know in my own country, in Algeria and many other places, it was the European, French European model that was adopted. The American model is the liberal arts or liberal education model, which is broad. Not liberal in the sense that it's liberal, not conservative, no, liberal as in liberalis, as in, you know, free, uh, freedom, free, uh, thinking. And it emphasizes a broader education. So I tell people when they say, oh, you're at the American university, so you are affiliated with America, you are, you know, part of the US system. I say, oh, no, we are part of the UAE Higher Education Ministry and everything. So why do you call yourselves American? I say, because we follow the American model of higher education. Oh, really? What is that? I say, it's very simple. The American model of higher education requires every student from whatever major to take roughly one third of their courses in non-major topics. Including, so for example, if you're specializing in, let's say, I don't know, business or management or languages or psychology or, uh, any non-science field, you are required at my university to take at least two courses in the natural sciences. Plus, in addition to that, roughly about ten to twelve other courses in writing, general education, humanities, et cetera. So, a medical model of, of higher education, you have to take one third of what we call Gen Ed, general education courses, which are outside of your major. And that ensures a little bit that you have a broader knowledge and the broader, uh, uh, understanding of what's around you and not just from day one. I am a product of the French system. I spent four years of, uh, of my bachelor education in the, in Algeria, when I, when I majored in physics. I did not take a single course in humanities or social sciences, not a single one. I did not take a single course in languages or writing. So never learned anything called writing, how you write, you know, an essay or, uh, or a report or anything like that. All my courses were, I think something like sixty to seventy percent of them physics. About twenty-five percent of them were mathematics. About ten percent of them were chemistry and there was one course in computer programming. And that was forty years of my education. So I tell, I tell people, I was educated like a robot. I was educated to be able to do physics, uh, very, very competently, but know nothing else, know nothing else. So what we need today is to ensure that everybody has this broader education and it is not enough to take courses elsewhere. It is very important to show the connections. Where does this relate to this? To those of us who are teaching and when I teach astronomy and for astronomy, it's a little bit easier to do this. I always show people how this is related to philosophy, how this is even related to religion, how this is related to history, how this is related to geology, how this is related to atmospheric science, how climate and so on. But it is also important for people who teach other fields like sociology, psychology, biology, economics, et cetera, to come, to complete and connect to other fields to really train the youngster's brain to really see the connections and this interdisciplinarity. Otherwise, we are going to siloise ourselves further and further and then it will, and then we will become not just robots, we will become completely separated robots who are speaking different languages. We cannot even understand each other.
Thank you very much. That was a very good, that was a very good, uh, talk on that. Especially because of how much information there is in any particular field. I do know that it was probably easier, uh, realistically speaking, for a scholar about a few hundred years ago to master or be considered a top scholar in multiple sciences, whereas today you're lucky if you could master one. But I did not know that, uh, I, I, I knew a little bit about that, that in the European model, it is more kind of focused on your specialization and you don't really have to dabble in the other sciences. But I didn't know that, that's why they were called American universities of Beirut, of Cairo or of, of Sharjah, Subhanallah. Thank you for that. Um, you mentioned something in your earlier talk that I feel, uh, would be pertinent to discuss. The philosophy of science. And oftentimes disregarded even amongst scientists, a field of study or field of inquiry. Where we learn on, we learn about what type of data or what kinds of data are to be interpreted in different kinds of way and what impacts do they actually have on our understanding of the universe? Sometimes data is just data, at least for now. But sometimes data has an immediate impact and an immediate thing that it informs us about. And then we have to learn how to interpret it. Um, is, is this something that, you know, you feel like is, 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 is also becoming kind of like a new field? That will then begin to maybe change the, the pathway and even the discourse that we can have within science? Because for instance, we have, um, the, you know, uh, quantum mechanics or quantum physics, which is digging deeper and deeper into things that twenty years ago would have been considered metaphysical and therefore nonsense. Will we begin to maybe have a discussion of the possibility of the supernatural? Or things that are unconfirmed to material sciences? Due to advancements in, you know, things like quantum mechanics and the furthering of the discussions around the philosophy of science? How do we interpret what it is that we know and how do we reconcile the data with our experiences? I, I don't know if that question makes sense.
Yeah, no, very good. Um, so let me simplify it a little bit and then get to the, to the questions, uh, or the issues that you were, uh, alluding to. But let's backtrack a little bit for the sake of the participants. Um, when I explain to people that philosophy of science is important, I start with very simple ideas. So I start by saying, what is the difference between data and information? What is the difference between information and knowledge? What is the difference between knowledge and results? Facts, models, theories, hypothesis, law? Do you know these words? Every single student has heard the, these words every day for years. I guarantee you that ninety-nine percent of, of students that I encounter would not be able to tell me the difference between data and information? Difference between information and knowledge? Difference between, uh, hypothesis and theory? Difference between, uh, facts and laws and what is a model? For example, these are just simple words. They're not that simple, but they are words that we use all the time and that we hardly ever take the time to explain them to students so that they know what they are doing. The problem is we teach them how to do things not to understand what they are doing. That's the problem. It's like, okay, you know how to do this, you know how to solve, you know how to calculate, you know how to measure, you know how? And then you graduate because you have mastered all these tools. But if you mastered all the tools, but you don't know what you're doing, what's the point? I mean, this is not knowledge, knowledge is understanding. It is not, uh, in a sort of, uh, uh, skills. There's a difference between skills and between, and, and knowledge. So that's the first thing that I take some time and even with sometimes high schoolers and I take half an hour and explain to them, uh, what is the difference between hypothesis, theory, model, law, fact, result? Uh, and then I explain to them what is the difference between data, information? Data is just, it's just some numbers that I collected from somewhere. Uh, and if I show them to you and, and I say, you know what this is, if you have no idea, just show me some numbers. And then if I put these numbers into columns, let's say, and then I label them and I say, this is, uh, the hour of the day. So it was like seven, eight, seven, so I just say seven, eight, nine, ten. So if you just see seven, eight, nine, you have no idea what this is referring to. But then if I say hour of the day, then you say, oh, this is time, okay, good. And then the second column, I say, you see here, it says twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-four, twenty-three, this was the temperature at that time. Ah, so now, now I have information. So now, because now this has been specified and has meaning. Then I say, okay, so can you plot this and tell me what you can infer from this? And then you plot it and there's a graph and you see, you see, oh, the temperature increases and then decreases and it seems to be because there has been something like this. So now we're building knowledge, not just information, now we're building knowledge. And this requires some interpretation, requires some, and this, prior understanding from you and so on. Now, so this is where, and then philosophy of science, we get to step beyond and say, but how do you acquire this knowledge? Not just how do you do it and how you understand what you're doing, but how do you do it? And even a long time ago, there was this long debate between philosophers at the time, who were philosophers but doing natural science. Long famous debate between Ibn Sina, Abisena and Al Biruni, for example. We exchanged long letters discussing these, these ideas. And do you construct it by going first to the field and making observations and collecting data, information and then turning it into knowledge and so on? This is sort of bottom up approach, which is what science does nowadays. This is called inductive. Or between setting some principles, what the philosophers were doing, what Abisena wanted to do, start with some big principles and then infer from them some results and some ideas as long as the proper inference is made properly, logically, philosophically, et cetera. And this is called deductive, this is, uh, top down. And so there were, there was this debate as to when do you do it top down and when do you do it, uh, bottom up? And when is it deductive and when is it inductive? And how do you know which one is proper and where, where does it work? This is part and parcel of the philosophy of science and it continues to be done today because different places, different times, different topics require different approaches as to how do you do? And then how do you know what you know that what you know is true? So this is how do you know? Like somebody asks, how do you know that? How do you know? How do you know? Uh, that is a central question in the philosophy of science. How do you know that this is true? Uh, in, in other words, when do we turn from hypothesis to fact, to result? So I formulated a hypothesis and then again, say, no, no, this is established, this is gone. And this is not just a hypothesis I formulated ten years ago or somebody, you know, uh, postulated a long time ago. No, this is established, this is gone, we've established that. Or how do you establish things? So we repeat experiments, there is something called falsifiability, blah, 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 repeatability, confirmation by others and so on and so forth. Now we get to, so for example, today, we have a topic called multiverse. Many people have heard of the multiverse as opposed to the universe. So universe is our cosmos, everything that there is in it, universe, simple. And then multiverse is this idea that has now existed for about twenty, thirty years, forty years, that actually there are multiple universes and altogether they make a multiverse. So is this a hypothesis or is this, uh, or is this a fact? For now, it's a hypothesis. But many cosmologists want to insist that we accept this. It's accepted on the basis of what? Have you, have you, uh, confirmed it? Do you, you have observations? How do you confirm the existence of other universes that you can never reach to? You can never observe. So something that you can never observe, can you accept? If you start to accept things that you can never observe, then as you alluded, can we now start accepting and establishing things that we can never observe directly? Like spirit, like maybe other entities, uh, and so on, supernatural entities and, and what have you? If you are now opening the door to things that we cannot observe, that we cannot measure directly and you're saying we accept them. And there is now a huge, you know, fierce debate among cosmologists. How are we going to establish the multiverse? And some of them have said, you cannot reject the multiverse. It is the one theory that we must, you know, accept and move. But say, on, on the basis of what? You say, well, there is some indirect results to it and the theory holds so well that if the theory is so strong and robust, then we accept it on that basis. Say, what? Since when we accept ideas and results on the basis of the theory is so wonderfully robust? This is an absolutely new and to some extent dangerous idea in science because now you start accepting on the basis of something that we have not observed and established. All of this, I wanted to start from the simplest ideas of data, information and so on and hypothesis, fact, uh, result, theory, et cetera, to all the way to multiverse and on what basis do you accept things that you cannot observe? All of this is philosophy of science.
Insha Allah. Uh, we have a question from one of the audiences. Uh, she says, uh, I believe, I'm also from Algeria, not sure if this is specific to certain fields only. But there are some people as myself who got really into the interdisciplinary, uh, interdisciplinary studies. Professor, what do you suggest to make this a new way of teaching and learning? Because the change starts at the very small scale.
Absolutely, yes. Uh, so welcome my compatriot, so to speak, from Algeria. So happy to see, uh, you know, the, the world is literally small. But yeah, absolutely, so on, on both, on both counts. One is, uh, I'll say a few more things about how to, uh, ensure that our education system uh, does not produce siloed people and closed minded people who understand only one thing and then cannot think properly about the world in general. And two, the fact that it has to start at the lowest levels. Um, there are some efforts that are done in this regard, to be honest. So for example, uh, in the, in many education systems, uh, the sciences are only taught in separate subjects like physics, chemistry, biology, et cetera, only in high school. So for example, in many parts of the world, uh, teachers teach science. They don't teach, you know, physics and chemistry or whatever. They teach science in elementary school, in junior high school, all the way to, uh, uh, to, uh, high school and then in high school, we diversify and then you have the teacher of physics and the teacher of chemistry. Uh, I was part of a project the last few years in the Muslim world called holistic science teaching. What is this holistic science teaching? We ran a project with, uh, many, uh, junior high school and high school teachers in a number of countries, including Algeria, in Pakistan. Uh, soon Insha Allah, we'll be doing it in Indonesia, in Qatar, in a number of other places. Where we bring in a number of teachers and we, uh, show them a number of topics from their own fields. Let's say from physics or from chemistry, from biology. But those topics we show them are obviously reaching out to beyond their topics. And we say, if, uh, if a student asks you, for example, um, so is it okay to modify, uh, foods, let's say? Or to do genetic engineering? So let's say, for example, you're a biology teacher and you're teaching genetics. Uh, you're not even teaching genetic engineering, you're just teaching genes and genetics in high school or in junior high school. And then a student says, uh, so, uh, teacher or professor or, uh, miss, um, what do you think of genetically engineered or genetically modified organisms? So what do you do? Do you say, do you answer that question, even though that question is not a biology question, obviously? It is referring to ethics, it is referring to, first of all, you need to explain what is genetically modified organisms. And then you have to explain how this is done. And then you have to explain, uh, whether this is acceptable and when if, and to explain that it is acceptable, there are different levels of acceptability. Is this legal? So in some countries, this is illegal. So this is just legality. And is it religiously halal or haram? So this depends on what kind of religion you're talking about. Is this in the Muslim world or is this in Christianity or is this in, in Europe or wherever? And is this ethically permissible and so on? So we try to train the teachers to see that many topics within the science are going to call for even more than science. They're going to, uh, uh, require you to bring in ethics, uh, uh, may, maybe laws? What do the laws say? Uh, history, maybe, how did this come about? What, what, what did it used to be in the past and what are we, uh, where are we now? Things like this. So we try to, from the beginning, train the teachers and the teachers communicate to the students that these ideas of science that we are learning now. So we talk about, I don't know, pollution, we talk about, uh, for example, nuclear physics. So you say, okay, you stop doing nuclear physics and then all of a sudden somebody is going to ask you, uh, sir, what about nuclear bombs? Uh, can you please explain how the nuclear bombs work? And then the moment you start explaining how nuclear bombs work, uh, which are essentially just, you know, nuclear reactions, uh, somebody is going to ask you, so is this, is this good or, or bad? Should we have nuclear bombs? Very simple. So should our country have nuclear bombs? Um, and then the teacher is no longer teaching physics, they're teaching ethics, uh, political, geopolitical issues, whatever, uh, what are the nuclear bombs for? Uh, should we ever have them, even to defend ourselves and so on? So to make a long story short, we tried, our approach was to try to train the teachers to see that science should not be limited to, to itself because sooner or later. because sooner or later it will connect to some other topics that are beyond the science. Number two, at the university level, we have, uh, we try to organize some courses. It is extremely hard because even the systems, even the American model of of higher education, which tries to broaden the the education of students uh is very reluctant and very hard, uh, not flexible enough to allow professors from different fields to teach together some topic that is multidisciplinary, interdisciplinary. Uh, so for example, I tried to uh put together a course with a colleague of mine from the from the uh philosophy department. And it was extremely hard even for the university to, so how is this going to work and how many hours you teach and how many hours she teaches? And how does this work and does it count as a course in philosophy or in science? And but you're an astrophysicist, so why are you teaching this kind of thing? And it was, it was a bit of a headache. And and it and it hasn't worked. We still haven't given up, but it still hasn't worked. And then uh once, I can tell you, once I I have organized at my university, at my university, uh, conferences and workshops on science and Islam. But at one point, I organized and tried to organize a conference on, it was called Science, Religion and Philosophy, and and it was shut down. And I said, no, this is too too um sensitive, the the word they used. Like, this is too sensitive, we're going to be talking about, you know, religion and people are going to be writing about this in the newspapers covering that there is this conference which is talking about philosophy and Islam and this and that. So no, no, let's let's not do that. And students, for example, nowadays want to, I have one student who is sort of my my hero, so to speak, because she's double majoring in, get this, philosophy and psychology. Like, I have never had somebody double majoring in these two fields. I have had many students who double major in physics and electrical engineering or double major in math and uh mechanical engineering or something like that. But I have never had somebody who majors across the uh social sciences and the natural sciences. But this is what we need to encourage. We need to encourage people to, and I always try to encourage students to at least take a minor. Do your majoring in whatever, I say, why don't you consider taking a minor in this or minor in that? And that will really broaden your ideas. One last thing I want to say. I tell the students when they say, why, why would I be minoring in, I don't know, management? Or why would I be minoring in environmental science? I'm a, I'm a chemical engineer. I'm a chemical engineer, environmental science, this works perfectly. But suppose they say, I'm a computer engineer, why would I be, you know, major, uh, minoring in uh environmental science or or in uh, I don't know, languages or what have you? I say, you know what? I'll tell you one thing that may surprise you. Even in your own science and technology fields, tomorrow you will be a researcher or you will be uh an inventor or you will be uh trying to innovate in some things. You, what you may not know, if you read many of the books that are being written nowadays, they will tell you that many great bright ideas that in innovators and inventors get, they actually get from other fields. They get by having diversified and broadened their minds and they see, oh, wait a minute, in economics, they have this idea of optimization or whatever. Or by looking even in the natural world, they say, you know what, the ants, I I love the ants. Right? When I look at the ants, you know what they do? They do this. Why don't we just try to adopt and maybe modify a little bit that idea, implement it in our circuits or something? And do it like that. You know, we've adopted ideas from the bees, for example, everybody knows, even in 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 uh in astronomy, in telescopes. Uh, so this multidisciplinarity, interdisciplinary broadening of our horizons is absolutely the way to go and very beneficial uh beneficial to us as individuals and as uh human communities.
Thank you so much, uh, Professor. I think with Al Saba has a question. Uh, with, are you going to uh talk in here? Okay.
Yes, Insha Allah. Uh, Assalamualaikum. First of all, thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, okay, perfect. Uh, first of all, thank you so much for giving us your time today. Um, what you're talking about is something very amazing. I think it's not something we talk about a lot. Uh, I am actually from MSA and I also work with Dr. Fahim on uh a research project about digital afterlife and religion. And one of the issues that we see, it's kind of like very related actually to um, of course, like Islam and um uh technology and Islam and um like the media. One of the problems that we see is that after people pass away, you know, everything that we do on social media and everything that we have, like our footprint is left there. So that kind of brings up like controversies of like what would we do with our personal like information out there? It could be used, but some people may say that, oh, it will be used as a, like people who post bad things will end up having more sins after they, you know, um, pass away. And there's a lot, like, technology has made it really hard to distinguish between non-religion and religious. Like, for example, when someone passes away, people will start using um names and like prayers, even if they're not religious enough. So I just wanted to like, like, hear your point of view about it and your perspective about the digital afterlife. And because of course, like at one, like, in the future, it is predicted that there will be more dead people like on social media, like more accounts of, you know, like the people who have passed away than there are accounts of people who are alive, which could be a big problem religiously. So I just wanted to like, hear your point of view and your perspective about this, you know? And thank you so much again.
Uh, thanks to you. Thank you very much for uh taking part and for participating with this very important idea, uh, digital afterlife, as you called it. Uh, yeah, you know, in in the Islamic tradition, there is this hadith that when a person passes away, uh, their their actions and or their acts end except for uh three things. One of them is uh their children pray for them, so they continue to get uh to get benefits from that because they have left some legacy. Another one is uh whatever monies or endowments they have made, so they have built some places and people continue to benefit from those. And the third one is ilmunun tafaau bihi, some knowledge that people continue to benefit from. And so you have, so somebody has died, but they have left behind some legacy, some some knowledge, some works that people are still reading their books, some people are still nowadays watching their videos, are watching their lectures and so on. So so by uh by, for sure, even in the Islamic tradition of, you know, very, very old times, uh, your acts and your actions don't end with your physical death. Uh, your footprint or your imprint is is still there for 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 a long, long time. Now, digital, the digital world has has now sort of uh introduced a new twist to this. And that is that sometimes your things are 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 used against you or used against your will. So there are many people whose names and photos are used, uh, you know, sort of, uh, how do we call it? People, people take uh false identities or um, you know, it's like hijacked identity. Uh, so, so we we need, we need to put some some uh rules and laws as to how digital data is used. So I don't want my, uh, and now with uh, you know, deep fakes and things like this, it's very easy that people can take and take, for example, this talk of mine now and substitute some words that I have said with other words and make me say some things that I actually did not say, but you cannot tell because it looks so much and sounds so much like me. And then people will be, you know, broadcasting it and say, look what this Nidal Gassoum was saying today to students in Arizona. He was, you know, uh, pushing them toward atheism, God forbid, or something like that. Uh, so so there's there's some complicated things and if you're no longer there, if you're dead, then it becomes even harder to come back and 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 challenge this and check this. And there are many people who were who were dead and then their parents or their siblings found that their pictures and videos were being used and the false identities to propagate certain ideas. Uh, I think what is very important to realize is whatever you do nowadays is being recorded, almost, almost. Uh, I have lost count of the number of things when I, when it struck me first, a number of years ago, uh, that I would be in some place and somebody would be asking me a question and I would be answering. And then later I would realize that somebody was actually, you know, filming all this with their smartphone. And then they would just go and put it on Facebook or something. Uh, so you have to be very careful what you say. It is not enough. So for example, I have an account on Facebook. I have had it for more than ten years. I'm very active on Twitter, almost every day I post things, et cetera. But I have almost never posted personal pictures and certainly not, except for, you know, once every three, four years, we're visiting, you know, the Great Mosque of Istanbul or something. And I am with my wife and kids and we take a picture and I don't mind posting something like that. But it is extremely rare that you will find a a family or personal picture of mine on social media. I post almost every day, but it is mostly science, education, information stuff. But I am extremely careful what I what I deliberately post. But even that is not enough because, as I said, a lot of people take pictures and take recordings and post them without my knowledge. And I have no idea that, for example, a discussion I was having with with some students somewhere uh after class or in the cafeteria or something, tomorrow is is on social media. So it is a a serious problem. This is one of the serious implications of technology I mentioned earlier and I'm glad you added this idea of digital technology. I was saying, technology of today, which is sort of the consequence or the application of science, of modern science, has opened new challenges for us, has opened new possibilities and opportunities, but has also produced new challenges. And these, and some of these challenges are indeed what happens with our digital imprint. Uh, a lot of it, we do not control. And so we need to put not only ethical guidelines, so people know how to behave, what to take. I once chided a student, we were in my research group. Uh, we were in meeting and we were talking about uh data and analysis and this and that. And then I don't know how, we started to chat about some other things and he was recording the thing. And then the day after, he sent that to us through the WhatsApp group. I said, whoa, wait a minute, you were recording this when you were chatting? And he said, yeah, I didn't think you would mind. I said, listen, before you record anybody, I think it should be pretty simple and clear that you need to ask for permission. Don't record just because we are friendly and and but he said, I didn't broadcast it, I didn't send it to anybody else, this is just for us. I said, yes, but in general, you should be asking for permission. So we need to set ethical guidelines as to how how people should behave uh in the digital world. And we need to put laws in there as to who should post what and who should do what. Should they be allowed to even modify my image? Make me, uh, you know, Photoshop me a little bit, make me a little bit more uh brighter or, uh, you know, looking less tired or whatever. So what are the uh limits of uh uh modifications and how to use uh digital technology?
Jazakumullah Khairan, Dr. Nidal Gassoum, may Allah reward you. Uh, this is going to bring us to the end of our discussion. I know that there are some questions in the chat and that there were some questions that I was messaged privately where people might want to reach out, uh, Insha Allah at another time. But we are at the end of our time for tonight's program. I wanted to thank you, Dr. Nidal, for joining us again for a second year in a row, Insha Allah. Uh, the third time that comes around, you'll be here physically, Biin Nilla. And it will be a beautiful event, Insha Allah Ta'ala. Uh, Dr. Fahim, thank you for your help, students who came, Jazakumullah Khairan for coming through. Um, I know there's always pleasant surprises and things that are unexpected. So you had a friend from Jazair who was like, Subhanallah, Alhamdulillah, I came on today. And, uh, you know, so we want to continue these types of conversations in the future. Again, where we bring in all of these uh uh different fields or these different disciplines together and we want to be able to converse and to maybe, um, you know, throw some ideas at each other. For instance, yeah, Dr. Gassoum, uh, there's a hadith, it's not very strong, but it nonetheless gives us a a starting point of an ethical guideline. In the Majalis Amana, right? The Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam said, gatherings, whether they're in the cloud or if they're down here on earth, gatherings of people, it's a trust. Right? And we have to be transparent and we have to be accountable towards each other. You know, there's a very, uh, you know, equally, you know, big discussion on screenshots and text messages and direct messages and so on and so forth that we then can get into as as long, uh, as well as what goes on in the digital afterlife or what the companies are doing with our data. But again, next time, Insha Allah. Barakallahufikum. May God bless you all. Thank you, everyone. And thank you, Dr. Ben Sanders, for helping us organize this. It's it's a very beneficial night with a very fruitful discussion.
Barakallahufikum, Jazakumullah Khair. It was really a pleasure and I look forward to uh next opportunities, Insha Allah, in person. Salam alaikum.
Insha Allah. Salaam alaikum warahmatullah.